Okay, welcome. Uh, I will call to, uh, we have an executive session following?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So just so everyone's aware, we have an executive session following this meeting. We do not expect to have to come back to vote on anything. I'll convene the regular work session for Tuesday, December 13th, 2016. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Ide?
Here.
Commissioner Man Goldberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. Does anybody have any future agenda items? Seeing none. I'll move on to discussion items. Say, 3A, PC 16 dash 122, Willant Falls Legacy Project Riverwalk Design Concepts. I assume this is Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. I am pleased to introduce Christina Robertson Gardner, our senior planner. I will try to keep my comments brief and to introduce our speakers for this evening. I would also introduce Brian Moore. He's the Willant Falls Legacy Project new project manager. Uh, he is an employee of Metro, but he works on behalf of the four government entities. Do you want to give a quick introduction to yourself?
Sure. Um, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I started with the project just back in October, so I've been sort of drinking from a fire hose, getting up to speed on this project. I'm sure you can all appreciate the complexity, both on the site and in the politics of this particular project. Uh, I am very excited to be working on it. Uh, this is the exact kind of project that I like to be working on. Uh, I don't, I don't like easy projects, but I like interesting projects. And this project is both, and I think it's going to be fantastic.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, just want to let you know, in addition to the community outreach the design team is putting on through their community events and surveys, our Willant Falls Legacy Project staff have been reaching out to community organizations this winter and into January, February, and are performing community conversations to engage the communities with some of the materials they saw at the November public event. Uh, some that we've already had to date. We are meeting with the McLaughlin Neighbor Association this Thursday. It was rescheduled. They've identified questions related to the flower mill and the exposure of number two and three paper machine and the carpentry shop. We presented to Prac about a couple of weeks ago, and they commented on simplifying the experience at the falls. They really wanted to remind the design team to let the falls speak for themselves when you got closer to the falls. Uh, and they supported the kayak access and steps to the water. They also wanted to know information about the boat access and other opportunities to access the site via our existing boat ramps. Uh, we presented to the planning commission last night. Uh, some of their main comments related to keeping authentic experience, which was very important to them, uh, as well as the dock question of John Storm Park, and most importantly, making sure that the main riverwalk areas are large enough to not compete with potential conflicts with bikes and pets. And once again, we have about 20 more community conversations we're scheduling over these next couple of months. And all of this information will feed back to the design team, which will be incorporated with all the other stakeholder outreach they are currently doing. Uh, the other projects we're working on in Oregon City is we will be starting community outreach to our stakeholders on the parking and transportation demand and parking plan starting in January through the spring with Rick Williams Consulting. We'll be reaching out to the planning commission, city commission work sessions as well as our stakeholders in downtown of McLaughlin to come up with a parking and access plan, both for Phase One and through the phases of the preferred riverwalk. Uh, think of it as how to use all the tools in the toolbox the best way we can over the phases of the program and which are the best ones to use when, and what are other tools that could, other of our partners could be using at different parts. The last things we'll be working on in conjunction with the design team is an interpretive plan will be coming out of this riverwalk preferred design that helps strategize the long-term implementation of the interpretation of the site, uh, kind of giving us this long-term strategy of how do we tell the story of the riverwalk through our different phases. And finally, we are continuing our government-to-government outreach with our five tribes that have declared interest in this project, along with a kind of a informal tribal advisory board that meets to provide comment on this design process. Uh, this government-to-government outreach will continue long after the preferred plan is kind of shown to the public this spring, and we understand that this is, does happen on a parallel process, and we want to work with the tribes to make sure we can incorporate their comments in the long-term build-out. So with that, that's kind of things we're working on as the design team is taking public comments and moving from design alternatives to a preferred concept. So right now, I'd like to introduce Michelle Dahlquist-Nohetta, who would like to give you an update on the process that the design team is on the riverwalk, process turning from the alternative designs you saw at the November event to a preferred design this spring. We're in a really pivotal point in this process, and they have a lot to share with what, what they've learned and where they are right now. So I'd like to introduce Michelle and her team right now.
Uh, it's great to be back here to share with you the progress that we've been making. Again, I'm Michelle Dahlk. I'm a partner and landscape architect with Snowheta, leading the design team effort. Tonight I have with me Matt McMahon, who's the design team project manager from Snowheta, and also our local design partner, Carol Mayer-Reed. Um, let's see. Oh, I need a clicker. Okay, so I'd love to run through with you progress that we've been making since the last time we visited with you, which was, I believe, back in July. Uh, we're about midway through the concept design process right now, and the concept design of, as you know, is really looking at the entirety of the riverwalk and developing a concept for the entire length of riverwalk. Uh, so at the, at the end of this, I'll talk a little bit about next steps, but if we go ahead, maybe?
On the right or the left? Right there? Yep.
Okay, okay. Uh, okay, so just a, a, a little bit of a reminder of the foundation of this effort really is to build upon the four core values and the framework plan that were established during previous efforts. I know you're all very familiar with these, but again, everything that we've been doing as we develop alternatives and, and focus in on a concept design for the riverwalk is grounded in, in testing these ideas against the values in the framework plan. Uh, and so you will see as we have started to, um, really hone in on the riverwalk, especially if you look at the framework plan as you see here, really studying the areas that are shown in green, the pale yellow, uh, the areas designated as, as three and four, uh, as we start to evolve the design. Uh, we were, uh, we had a very successful, I think, community engagement process that, that really kicked off this effort. Uh, I guess this one was back in March where we, uh, heard from the public about their interests in terms of key uses and activities and experiences along the riverwalk. We then also had an opportunity to come back, and the design team spent the day at the, the First City Festival here in Oregon City, where we were able to continue to share progress on the riverwalk and talk a little bit more in-depth with the community about these activities and really focus in on these uses and, uh, thinking about really programming and activating the riverwalk throughout all times of year. Uh, so the, the key uses which are shown here are really the drivers for the kinds of program that we are working to embody within the riverwalk design. That ranges, uh, all of these again come from the four core values, but begin to, to capture specific uses ranging from what you can see here, such as paths and walking and biking trails, to thinking about the PGE dam operations. We've really found, uh, great support and interest from PGE in working with our, us on the design process to not only make sure that we are capturing, uh, or addressing their access needs to maintain and service the, the dam, but to really, uh, think about how we can tell the story because there's a rich history associated with PGE and their operations here, as well as the other historical and cultural interpretation ranging from, as Christina mentioned, working with the tribes to thinking about the, the natural history and of course, the industrial history of the site. From the community outreach, now that we've had both, both outreach meetings as well as online, uh, surveys, uh, at the First City Festival, we, and, and with subsequent, subsequent focus groups, we've really had an opportunity to start to dig into what you see here, which are, uh, thinking about when all of these different activities and, um, events can start to happen. So we're thinking about this, we call, refer to this as a calendar, and it's a, a living document where we are tracking and starting to really look at the different seasons, the different times of year, the different kinds of, uh, activities that might respond not only to the falls and, and the water level itself, because as you all, I know, are very aware, there are times of year, like right now, where the water is really intense and raging, and the mist is really present. There are other times of year where it's, it's much drier. Um, those, uh, those seasonal changes really can capture, uh, different, uh, opportunities to enhance, um, habitat restoration, migratory species, when those different, um, animals and bird life can, will be on-site, when there might be different uses for the public, uh, and again, um, uh, even redevelopment opportunities. How we, how do we really think about the riverwalk as all, many times of, throughout the day and throughout the year, having a lot of energy and activity? So we have, have taken, uh, a lot of this feedback, and we've begun to really look at the site, and in order to, to think about the site, we've divided it into four key areas that you can see here. Uh, this is really just the existing conditions from an aerial. Uh, these four areas are, are, allow us to look at the site and how the edge condition of the property, uh, sort of transforms and has a different relationship to the waterfront in these different areas. So in Area One, the North Riverfront, uh, it's, it's a tighter zone. There's a tighter area between the waterfront and the existing developed area. Uh, in Area Two, uh, but it's a more natural, um, uh, river edge. In Area Two, it's a much more constructed, built-out. Uh, we refer to it often as a platform. The, the natural geology kind of slips underneath, uh, the platform of development. Uh, Area Three is of course the PGE dam area and, and where Mill E is located. And Area Four is highlighting the potential connection and way, way of thinking about how we connect to Kanema. Uh, it's important to note the kind of green dashed line, which is marking the overlay flood zone and, and how, uh, that affects the site, which influences how we're thinking about, uh, the relationship between, uh, riverwalk and public space and potential redevelopment areas. So we have begun through the, oh, and, and before I go into that, so looking at those four areas, also making sure to look back at some of the, the historic uses and activities and, and on the site, and really using historic photographs such as these to, to understand some of the evolutions that the site has gone through. All of the evidence of the, uh, history and the changing site i- is not there today when, when you are, uh, standing on what is, uh, built today. So here you can see evidence of, uh, the changing shoreline, um, you can see, uh, the woolen mill, um, kind of right in the center of this image, and one of the historic tail races that, that allowed water to flow through the site. So we're using, uh, oops, I'm sorry, let me go back, using images like this to, to really also understand what maybe is, is hidden and not as evident to us on the site. So, uh, over the last few months, we have begun to explore, uh, how to begin to physically consider potential opportunities for the riverwalk on the site in these four areas. So what you're seeing here is, uh, the four areas, uh, divided vertically. Uh, the top image as it goes across horizontally across the top is the existing conditions. And we didn't want to get too much into, uh, all of the details that are embodied in these studies, but we wanted to share the process with you a little bit, that we started by really looking at, um, kind of three different approaches to each of the areas, and how we may begin to think about alignment for the riverwalk in terms of, uh, paths and trails, areas where we may be able to really think about habitat restoration and vegetation, places where we might, um, be able to reuse existing structures, uh, where we leave structures in place and maybe, uh, in some cases, simply use them to construct new parts of riverwalk and trails, other places where, uh, they may be relics in the landscape that, uh, can be utilized as we develop the interpretation plan. Uh, so as you look at each of these, it just begins to show you some of the studies that were done that have, have led us to, um, building a certain amount of consensus and, um, ideas that through our working groups and through, um, engagement from the different project partners, that led to what we took, uh, to the, um, more, the recent public engagement meeting, which happened last month. Uh, as an example of zooming in on one of those areas, not only were we looking at the way that we might interact with the site in terms of vegetation and, uh, circulation and access, but the middle diagram shows a study of, of how we start to think about those key uses. So where might we have overlook opportunities? Where might we have, uh, different types of trails, which are what, what's shown in yellow in that middle diagram? Where might we focus on habitat restoration? And then the far-right diagram, we, uh, explored how we would really, uh, at a, at a high level, how we would interact with the site. So where would we need to remove structures? Where would we need to regrade? Uh, there are other areas on-site where there's constructed platforms. What, what might we be able to do through removals and exposing, uh, the basalt and engaging the site by what we demolish and take away, being just as important as what we add? So we used these to explore the, these different ideas on the site to begin to be able to understand what the implications are and start to understand, uh, the impact on the site. So through that, uh, series of studies and, uh, working with everybody that's been involved with it, the process, we developed this, which we refer to as a baseline for the riverwalk design. Uh, so, and what you're seeing here are areas where we were, at, at this point, we were able to build consensus about these zones being a part of the riverwalk alignment. Uh, there's a lot more study and evolution of what the actual design is, but it's suggested here in the different areas, uh, of that, of, of, as I said, consensus, where, um, we were able to think about all of those different uses, all of the, the four core values, and how we might apply it to the site. This is actually, uh, really just the beginning of what we see as the full vision for the riverwalk, because there are a lot of other areas highlighted here in orange that our team continues to study and continues to investigate. These are the areas where either the, um, interface with redevelopment potential needs more investigation. Um, there may be more, uh, input and feedback that we need from the, the partners and the, um, stakeholders to think about, uh, program and activities and how we interface with the site. And we're working on these now. So we went to the, um, community meeting last month with that baseline to talk about alternatives in six key areas that the community could really begin to give us more feedback and influence the evolution of the design. So we're, we wanted to take a little bit of time this, this evening to talk about these six areas and share with you, uh, some of the feedback that we heard from the public. So we'll zoom in so you can see those a little bit better. That event happened just about a month ago, on November 17th. Uh, we had about 500 people come to this event, so we had a really great turnout. Uh, it was, uh, the, the event had, uh, multiple activities going on. We had a, one, uh, area where we had a lot of background and, uh, many of the drawings and studies that the design team has been, uh, pursuing. We had some of the technical investigations about hydrology and, and habitat, uh, and we had, um, through the course of the night, three different presentations where we gave an overview of where we are in the process. Uh, but we also had, uh, a workshop area where we had about 150 participants spend about an hour, uh, really working on those, these six areas that we want to show you tonight, uh, to give really specific and direct feedback about the design opportunities there. We also had, uh, over 1,200 people respond to an online survey and give feedback, um, through a survey that somewhat mimicked what we did in that workshop. Uh, we did find that, uh, from the people that, that responded, not everyone who came, uh, filled out information, but we learned, I think, that we had not only quite a large number of, uh, people who had been to previous events, but we also had a lot of new, uh, attendees. So we're still, uh, finding outreach, um, bringing people who are, are new to the area or newly interested in the progress and, and want to share their input. Oh, sorry. Oh, so if we zoom in to these six areas that we've highlighted, and we start at the north end of the riverfront, uh, we used, uh, drawings like this, which are, uh, slices through the, the riverwalk alignment. Uh, you can see at, at that small in, image on the upper left, a key plan. So this is kind of the far northern end where the existing, uh, development is, is pretty close, the, to the riverfront edge, to the riverbank edge. We focused on two areas here to, that really, um, one, the explorer trails, which actually really informs and can be applied to, uh, many different parts of the site, uh, but we use this as a, uh, an example area to think about that. And then we also talked with the community about water access and different ways to provide access for small watercraft. Oh, yes, go ahead.
A couple of other things about these drawings is that we selected the location of the cut to really, um, reveal some of the more sectionally complex areas of the site. So understanding not just the site and plan as you had in the framework master plan, but also understanding the relationship, relation, the vertical relationships among all the elements. And then the other thing that these drawings help to do and to illustrate to the public is tying the feedback that we heard from the March event, uh, about key uses and beginning to demonstrate how that public input, um, is perceived and, and used by the design team into understanding the elements that you can see here in the drawing. So each piece sort of is tagged, and you can see kind of the specific detail of whether it's a restored tail race or a flower mill foundation, and those are bundled underneath the key use that's related to historic reuse and cultural interpretation, for instance.
And, and when you're looking at these drawings, I think something to, to keep in mind is that the, the elements that are kind of drawn in white are basically suggesting, uh, approximate locations and opportunities for, for things like trails and, and access areas. Really from the, um, input from the community, we will then be taking these and really evolving, um, the design to capture some of that feedback. So they're really, uh, again, suggestions of kind of typical, uh, cross-sections. So in that North Riverfront area, uh, we used, uh, images to talk about what we're referring to as the explorer trails. And we had, uh, in the workshop and in the online survey, we had a collection of images that we asked for feedback from the community. And what we've highlighted here in the kind of orange box are the three images that were really, um, that we heard from many, many people, uh, interest in. Uh, and, and what, what they told us is that there, that what's embodied in these is really thinking about how, uh, we can have interaction with, with nature, but also being respectful of habitat and ha, and trying to have kind of a light touch, so minimal disturbance. And, and I think these images reflected an approach to how we might start to think about building paths on the, um, site that, that have that light touch. Um, certainly there was a, um, an interest in, in natural materials and feeling like materials such as wood, uh, also kind of blend into the landscape and feel appropriate for the site. And again, uh, thinking not only in this area, but throughout the site, about safety and accessibility for everyone. So, uh, as we really start to dive into the design of the riverwalk and, and make choices about materiality and, and, um, location of these elements, uh, we'll be thinking about that. The other area that we focused on in, or the other, um, study, um, piece that we focused on in Area One was the question about, uh, water access. And so we used sketches like you're seeing here, which were variations on that, that initial, uh, drawing that we showed you, that, uh, were meant to prompt a discussion. So we, we really wanted to make sure everyone, uh, knew, knew that we weren't, uh, posing design options and that the idea was to pick one, but, but what, but more that the idea was to share with us perspective on, on what people are looking for and how we should be thinking about designing these areas. So the, the drawing highlighted in the orange box shows an idea that we really heard some consensus around in terms of having areas for boat launch. Now, there's a, I think, quite a bit more investigation and study to do because there was a lot of different feedback, but we did hear that the, there was an interest in having a variety of uses. So everything from fishing to, uh, watercraft to just sitting close to the water edge and being able to get down close to the water. Um, but there was very large, uh, broad support for having access to the water.
Kind, two things. One, um, going back to that earlier slide, I just want to encourage you to remember that this is Oregon, and, um, we do have rather extremes of weather, and so using something like that wood trail there makes me really nervous about maintenance cost long-term.
Sure.
So, you know, we need to think about those kinds of materials moving forward, because I, undoubtedly, at the end of the day, it's going to fall on Oregon City to, to take care of the maintenance of this project. Um, the, the second thing, if we go back to the next slide, um, as we've just been talking about a boat dock at Clackamet Park, um, I, you need to have real ideas about whether that dock is, can be an integral part of this process, because, um, between the five alphabet soup agencies that deal with docks, uh, it can be a long-term and cumbersome process, up to 10 years to cite something like that. So I would encourage you not to spend a whole lot of energy without having done some investigation about how long it might take to do something like that.
Right, right.
One of the, one of the things that we've been working closely with Metro and Oregon City to arrange are a number of different focus group sessions with what we're calling the river-dependent, um, activity, uh, focus group. And so we held, uh, the first of those meetings this past July, at the same time that we met with you previously, and we'll be holding another one of those sessions tomorrow, um, to begin to kind of digest and, and debate whether the, the feedback that we received from the, the public is practical from that point of view.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep.
Question?
Oh, yes.
Um, so there was some consensus on some of the design elements, um, but what I'm wondering is, are those specific to that section?
It's a great question. I, I think-
Because I think one of the things that concerns me is, is that, um, we don't limit the amount of opportunities that we have for access to water, because obviously, um, we know- Because obviously, um, we know that that's one of the biggest elements of this project. My concern is if it's in one place, in one place only, that's going to be a major problem. And, um, I want to be careful about how all the partners, um, minimize the public input on that specific piece because it was a big conversation with the Whitewater Park. To me, it wasn't about the Whitewater Park so much as it was about the water and access to that site.
Yeah, yeah.
So as we go forward and have these opportunities for the public to speak on these different things, I know it's already been narrowed. Um, and my concern is as we keep narrowing that through voices of other large partners, that the public's really not having a conversation about water access and where that might be.
It's a, it's a, it's a great question. I, there are some, um, studies that we'll show you that are a little bit more specific to certain parts of the site and that it, those kind of te, they tend to be more about reuse of existing structures. So for example, water access, I think, is a really great one to bring up because, uh, what we really wanted to reinforce in these conversations with the public is that this is just an example area, but we were really wanting to understand the kind of, the kind of access and the kind of interest that there is. And then take that interest and look at additional areas on the site through the other focus groups and, and input from other, um, other folks involved. So everyone from PGE and safety and as you are close to the dam, for example, to, uh, we are working with CH2M, who is one of the consultants working with, uh, Metro to help us understand the hydrology of the river. And so taking that feedback from the public to understand, engage the interest and the types of access and then applying it to a broader understanding of the site.
And I guess that, I mean, it's a very fine balance, I understand. I'm just worried that if some of that conversation is more weighed towards the partners than it is to the public, um, then we are not going to have the conversations that we need to get to the design that we want. Because I understand the concerns that different partners have about accessing the water in various sites, but if they determine that before the process is all the way through, the public doesn't have a dialogue about those potentials. And that negates any possibility to, to have a conversation about how to deal with the concerns that these other partners have.
Right, right.
Um, and I think that needs to, I know that's already happening. And so I, I'm very concerned about that and I've mentioned it multiple times and I will do so because this is my last meeting, but I think that needs to be really thought about.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Any other questions on these? Do you want me to go on?
There's no wilting flowers up here, so.
Okay. So the next area that we focused in on is, uh, that what we refer to as area two. So in that larger site diagram, this is the area where there's really the, there's what we refer to as platform, there's constructed, uh, platform, really almost all the way out to the water's edge. So this is where you, uh, see the Pipe Chase, which is labeled number three right here. The Pipe Chase, this is a sketch showing a potential, um, alteration to it. Uh, and we'll show you a few, a few other ideas, but the Pipe Chase, of course, is an existing structure right out at the water's edge. And today, uh, from that, uh, back all the way to the Woolen Mill Foundation in Main Street is what we have been referring to as the Yard Area, which is basically that, that flat area. There's, uh, uh, there are several existing structures inclu, including the Carpentry Building in that area. And what you see here in the background of this image, Mill O. So, uh, again, we tried to highlight here the different kinds of uses and activities that a space like this could embody. We chose this area in part because of that, uh, unique condition along the waterfront and, and the, um, kind of constructed platform, which, uh, presents some opportunities if we start to think about removals of this area. Uh, but also it's one of the larger spaces within the site, um, that was identified in the framework plan as public space that, that has a, a kind of a, a larger aggregate of space that we could think about, uh, different kinds of uses and activities that maybe could happen here.
One of the lessons that we learned from our, uh, March event was that there was a real strong interest from the public of having a central gathering space for Oregon City. And from the work that the design team has done for analyzing the site, it's our recommendation that the Yard Area is probably the best suited to be able to support those types of gatherings and flexible uses that we heard at that March of Public event.
So generally speaking, how many square feet is that space?
In this sketch, which we're showing, uh, kind of diagrammatically, a portion of it being, uh, restored habitat and a portion as hardscape. The hardscape area is around 40,000 square feet.
I think it's 260 by 260 feet. If you take the, you know, the, the face of the, of Mill O down to the Pipe Chase and then the face of the Woolen Mill down to the grotto, it's 260 by 260.
So I'm sure there's a formula for this. How many people could you put in that space?
Oh, we were looking at that earlier today. So depending on, on, on how, so we were looking at it based on this sketch. So if you take sort of half of that zone, uh, we had, if you were really, really tightly, uh, standing, like you had a concert and you were really tightly packed, we were looking at 3,000.
Okay.
Which, um, to our understanding from the folks we've been talking to, it is quite a bit more than any existing spaces or activities, events that are happening in the city today. But we're also looking at things like we did some kind of test layouts for, uh, if you wanted to have some kind of market, like similar to a farmer's market or a craft market. How would you lay out, um, sort of stalls for that? Or if you wanted to actually have seating and have a little bit more space and, um, so we, we've just been starting to, to look at that. And what would be the, the access and servicing that you would need to have?
And one of the other things that we're working to balance, um, with the group of habitat stakeholders that Metro has been having us put in, uh, that's put, that put us in touch with, is balancing the, um, needs of the, the target wildlife species that the project, um, seeks to support by introducing, um, some of the habitat, as you've seen in this picture, into the interior of the site, revealing, um, the historic tail races and what, what they call alcove aquatic zones, if you remember back to that historic images that we showed earlier, of allowing that to be something that also could be a part of this space to not only sort of support the, the people of Oregon City, but also the wildlife and the, um, the habitat uses that historically used this site.
So what we took to the public are these sketches, really focusing in on the, um, how we might begin to think about the Pipe Chase and the area kind of surrounding the Pipe Chase. And so we did a, a series of sketches to suggest that, uh, the range of if you keep the Pipe Chase in place and you make slight modifications, could you use it as, uh, a part of the, the River, Riverwalk connectivity versus, uh, the extreme of, of removing, um, portions or, or large portions of it and really focusing on habitat restoration. And the two that we highlighted are kind of the, the two that emerged with a lot of interest. Uh, I think probably what we were hearing, actually, I think on the next slide, is that, um, there's a really, uh, great opportunity to, um, use the Pipe Chase as a place to capture views and, uh, that could actually be out towards the water, but also back towards the site, so into the habitat and into the yard. Uh, I think a lot of people were interested in having a, an area that's at least partially protected. So as we've been talking about the different seasons and the, and, um, activating the site throughout the year, uh, we were out there today. It might've been nice to, to have a, a little place to warm up. There was, uh, an interest in what we've suggested here, for example, what, that we called the porch, where you might be able to actually provide access, cutting holes and, and areas into the Pipe Chase so that you have better visibility and, and better viewing, but that you could have a, a partially protected area. Again, really thinking about safety and security, uh, so how you, um, manage that access will be important. There's also, um, as we're starting to, to dive into interpretation and, and cultural and historic, um, opportunities to, to tell those stories, uh, the idea of having maybe a gathering place in the Pipe Chase, also what's suggested in, in both of these sketches is that you could have kind of a, um, uh, a stepped seating area as a part of it, where you could gather groups and someone could be giving a tour or, or, um, having an informal class, so having those kinds of discussions. And then habitat restoration was a really, um, well-supported opportunity. And as we're learning more and more about, um, how to think about that, I think one of the, the key factors in, in really, uh, providing, uh, good habitat restoration is to make sure that it's really connected to the waterfront and that we're minimizing, um, kind of dark areas that, underneath the, the Pipe Chase. So partial removal, partial removal of the Pipe Chase would allow better habitat restoration The other area in that sketch was what we're calling the Public Yard, so what we were talking about just a few minutes ago. We showed images such as these to, uh, really engage in a conversation about, uh, materiality and activities and programming. And, uh, these three images emerged as really capturing a lot of support about having, again, as Matt was saying, a, a relatively large, flexible space that can be programmed for a variety of uses. Again, natural materials came up as a, as a strong interest, like you see in the, the image, um, on the upper left in the orange box, the, the stone suggests there. Really capturing views from, from this space and, and again, providing maybe a covered area for shade or for rain protection, whether that's the Pipe Chase or, uh, a, a different structure that might be within this Yard Area, or how we can start to think about the potential reuse of, uh, existing structures such as Mill O, which is adjacent to the north side of this space. I, I think what we hear through more and more conversations is, is really, uh, that potential for flexibility, uh, this being a place that could, it's, it's very centrally located within the site and it, it acts as kind of a heart or a gathering space and really can, can be an important, uh, public space within the Riverwalk. The third area that we looked at with the community is, uh, the area closest to the dam. So you can see in this sketch, uh, the Holly Powerhouse Foundation, uh, and the edge of the dam and the Clarifier. And we, we focused in here on, uh, talking about what the opportunities for the Clarifier and for reuse of the Powerhouse Foundation might be. For the, uh, Clarifier, we did a series of sketches that really ranged from removal of the Clarifier to providing, uh, habitat restoration, to different variations of how you might program or activate it. So the two that are highlighted, um, capture the feedback, uh, that people were really, um, I think, interested in how we might really think about the Clarifier as a component that can be reused on the site. But there was a broad variety of, of op, opinions and ideas about what that could be reused for. So there was, um, uh, comments about it being iconic and really being, uh, an important structure on the site from some people's point of view. Uh, but it ranged from what we show in the upper image, which is an idea about, uh, habitat restoration, but also maybe creating some kind of prospect. So essentially, you know, today it's a dish, like you could fill it in and create a hill and have opportunities for viewing and for prospect. You could have vegetation. Uh, we've also been exploring the potential that you could use the Clarifier as kind of a landing pad of sorts, where we could have, uh, Riverwalk access paths that connect to the Clarifier and provide access to the, um, the Holly Powerhouse Foundation area as an alternative to, uh, walking along the dam itself. Part of the reason that that's kind of emerged as an important discussion is that while that, the dam walk will be an important part of the Riverwalk, uh, they do, PGE does have to sometimes close it and manage it for, uh, maintenance and operations. So when they're doing that, this could be another way to, um, kind of easily, uh, direct, um, pedestrian movement, but retain that connection out to the, that, that close viewing point to the falls.
Question?
Yeah.
Have, have, have there been any seismic studies down at the Clarifier?
No, there have not yet, no.
Okay.
So a, as we, uh, hone in on, on some of these existing structures, then, then some of the next steps will, will be more in, uh, technical investigations. So that'll be very important. Just real quickly, the bottom image kind of shows, uh, uh, an extreme variation from, from the, the idea of habitat and prospect. Today, the Clarifier kind of is a dish. Uh, so this was a discussion about having a, another kind of event space where maybe you build in some sort of seating or, um, uh, places to gather and that, that this could really be an, uh, an event space that can be, um, managed. It could be open to the public all of the time. It can be, um, closed if you wanted to, um, manage it for special events and those kinds of things. I think we really heard that it's an important viewing point and again, uh, seen as another opportunity for an important, uh, community gathering space. And then, uh, we used, uh, images like this to talk about the Holly Powerhouse Foundation and hear feedback about, um, how people might want to see that overlook considered. Uh, we heard that really having a personal connection to the falls and meaning, feeling really in close proximity, where not only where you would see the falls, but you would feel the spray and, and sense the power. Um, and we really, today when we were on-site, you really, that was certainly reinforced. Uh, the, the architecture of this element could really enhance what that experience is. It could really create a sense of drama or, um, um, i- iconic moment on, on the site, but that it really needs to fit within that larger context and be respectful that it is about viewing the falls.
So is that part of PGE's property still? The Powerhouse itself?
Yes, yes, yes.
So any modifications to the existing structure would have to go through PGE?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Uh, and I think some of the other things we heard, again, reinforcing natural and industrial materials as an interest. Uh, and again, uh, the potential to have, uh, some amount of protection and, from the So, um, where we are today is, uh, we, we actually are just starting to digest some of that feedback. We were all in attendance of the meeting and we've started to, to, um, really start to filter through and, and hear some of that feedback. Uh, we're, uh, over the next few days, we're continuing to have, uh, meetings with some of the focus groups. Uh, and we will be working on taking the, um, kind of, um, two, uh, key components, taking some of that feedback and integrating it into refined design for that, what, what we were, what we shared with the public that we're calling the baseline concept area. And we're also investigating those other areas that we highlighted in the orange diagram. Uh, we're doing additional studies and additional, um, work to identify which areas and in what way they might be incorporated into the larger vision of the Riverwalk. Uh, and again, just as a reminder, we didn't show it in the slides here, but, you know, we really are, uh, I think tasked with thinking about the Riverwalk not as a path, but as something that really captures, uh, so much more than, than a path along the waterfront, but some, uh, uh, public space that engages, um, both the, the river and the falls, uh, three dimensionally. Uh, and so we continue to, to look at all the layers. And, um, we will be back with, uh, we'll be working over the next, um, couple of months and we'll be back in late February or early March to present the preferred concept design for feedback from the public.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
I didn't hear you talk a lot about ideas around the lagoon and the Kanema Trail. What, what is emerging there?
That's a great question. So, um, we are working on, on those areas and in that diagram with, that I refer to as the orange diagram, where we highlighted areas for further investigation, th, those are some of the spaces that we're investigating now. So, so we, we, uh, had a little bit more work to do in terms of building consensus and learning a little bit of more about those, but they're, uh, definitely being investigated and studied right now. And, and we've looked at a variety of, of ways of thinking about connection, um, to Kanema or to the, uh, bluff, uh, above that area as well as, um, is it Mill E, right?
Mill E, yes.
Mill E, um, that, and that area where the lagoon is.
Then my second question is, and I haven't heard any mention of parking, but that'll be a critical part of the Riverwalk experience. Is that something envisioned for the pri, private part of the site or are you incorporating parking into this part as well?
So, um, absolutely. A very important part of how access will be provided. And as Christina mentioned, um, I think, uh, starting in Jan, January, uh, the intention is to be, um, get underway with the parking study, which will be looking at, uh, the entire site. which will be looking at the entire site to consider parking and access.
And I would say that it's, DKS, who worked on the Vision Framework Master Plan, will be considering circulation and as it relates to parking, as well as, I know the work that Christina mentioned earlier regarding Rick Williams and the TDM report.
Right, right.
Any else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So I'm going to use my executive authority and I'm going to change the agenda, Mr. Councillor, since we're paying you. And we're going to put residential membrane structures up because we've got a bunch of folks in the audience who are obviously here and interested in that. So we will go to PC 16121 Residential Membrane and Fabric and Metal Accessory Structures direction. Mr. Conkle, are you doing this or is Mr. Way? Mr. Way?
Very much. City Municipal includes locally adopted standards for accessory structures or membrane structures. So these would be things like detached garages or carports or sheds or those similar type structures. The code currently includes regulations for the height of those structures, the design aesthetic of those structures, location, things like that. These standards were adopted through a public process, which included review by the Planning Commission as well as City Commission. And we believe in this process quite a bit. It's nice to have a process where citizens can come and talk to Planning Commission and City Commission and have input on our standards and how they're adopted and created. So we hold them in very high regards. As a profession, a lot of us get into planning or building to make sure that we have a city that the citizens feel safe and inspired by and comfortable and really enjoy. So it is our pleasure as staff to implement the code that was adopted that went through this process. And the goal is ultimately for compliance. We're not looking to send people to municipal court and fines or anything like that. In fact, I'm not aware that there have been any fines for membrane structures, although I am aware of five cases that did go to court that property owners had to remove those membrane structures. So just a brief summary on how we got to where we are. In June, we received a significant number of complaints on membrane structures. Those would be fabric or metal accessory buildings. Our code currently prohibits or limits them significantly in most cases if they are visible from the right of way. And in response to that, we've had a couple of discussions here at the City Commission. We've talked about it about four times or so. And within that, we've received a significant number of testimony from the public. I think there's more written testimony before you tonight. A lot of the testimony included concerns or anger regarding these existing standards that have been in place. And so tonight, I'm looking for direction from the City Commission. There's a couple of options. One, change the code, or two, don't change the code. From what I've heard, pretty simple. There's been concerns with a couple of different things. One is the exterior building materials. From our conversations, it sounds like the Commission had concerns about the standards for exterior building materials for these types of structures. And also, it sounds like there was support for the regulation and our current standards that these types of buildings have to be behind the front of the home. And there was discussion about the height of these structures. We limit the height if they're closer to property lines. And it sounded like there was some concern if all types of RVs or those types of structures could fit under our maximum height when you're three feet from the property line.
So where are you at maximum height wise?
It's four, so it's 35 feet, but if you want to reduce setback, which is three feet from the property line, it's 14 feet as measured to the midpoint. So.
So theoretically, if somebody could have a 35-foot tall membrane structure?
If they, so they could have an accessory structure that is as tall as a house, and a house could be 35 feet. The accessory structure could also be 35 feet if it met the setbacks of zoning designation. If you want to get a little bit closer to that property line, meaning reduced to three feet, then it's no taller than 14 feet. And that's measured on the midpoint, so.
My suggestion would be add two inches to that 14, too. Because the tallest RV that's allowed under ODOT is 14 feet. So nobody theoretically should need anything taller than 14, too, anyway, unless, I guess, you're going to park your Boeing 747 in your backyard, but. So moving on.
And then it also sounded like there was concern about some existing membrane structures. So in our current code, we specifically prohibited grandfathering structures, whether they were built to comply with the setbacks at the time or not. We said all existing fabric and metal structures have to go away by a certain date. And there was some concern there.
Hence how we got here.
Hence how we got here. So we've been here for about six months. We've paused code enforcement for these six months. And we've been collecting cases, but we've not really been moving forward on doing anything with those cases. From my understanding of our conversations with the Commission, there, the concerns are the building material and the height of the structure. And that seems to be where there is the conflict with the code. So I wanted to summarize if we've narrowed it down to those being those points and then also if you want to change the code or not. Staff can change the code. The public can also change the code. It's open to anybody. So changing the code, if you wanted to, say, allow all types of building materials or these fabric and metal ones, you could do that relatively easy process-wise. So the minimum legal requirements do not include notification to property owners. There are ramifications of that because you're not telling everybody what you're doing, but the minimum legal requirements are you could allow a higher structure and a different materials, which we don't allow now, without doing that property owner notification. You would just go before Planning Commission, City Commission, and CRC or some other type of process. So the cost of that is about $4,000-ish, a little shy of that. If you don't want to do the public notification, if you would like to send notification to all the property owners within the urban growth boundary, which is what we typically do, then that's more towards $9,500.
So you're talking notification for the planning cycle?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then it would tell people the Planning Commission date and the City Commission date so they could come and attend and provide that public input.
Okay.
So at this point, I'm just looking for a little bit of direction on if we want to pursue changing the code or not, and if you're looking for staff to do that.
If I can add, just to, as we've had this discussion, and I think Laura's summarized some of the concerns we've heard, both from the citizens as well as the Commission. One proposal would be, it sounded like, as Laura said, that there's agreement the membrane structure should be behind the front of the house. That there, the height is something that we can look at and find a number that works. And that the three-foot setback seemed appropriate, which has been consistent with our code.
Three-foot setback from where?
From the side properties, side property lines.
From the side property, but not necessarily from the house.
We do have separation requirement there. We can look at that as well. So from what I've heard over the last couple of meetings is, you know, send, there seems to be consensus around those three issues. So we could take the membrane structure code that exists in the municipal code and remove the parts as it relates to the materiality, remove the lack of a grandfathering. And as you're, if this is something that the Commission is interested in doing, because it's a legislative process to change the municipal, the land use code, it would have to have a plan, a hearing in front of the Commission, the Planning Commission, and then a hearing in front of the City Commission in order to do that. Concurrently with that, if the Commission decides, you could theoretically, let's just say, we go through this process, it gets adopted in May of 17. You could grandfather in and make pre-existing legal conforming all existing structures, whether they comply with the height or not, whether they comply with the setback or not. But it sounds like at a minimum, it should be behind the front of the house. That would be an option that we could put together and take through the process.
Question?
Commissioner Smith?
What happens if someone in this city has a structure in the front of their house and are asked to remove it? And yet we're told at some time by staff, whether it was in the code or not, that they could build it? What do we do then?
In this scenario, you just said it sounds like we would grandfather everything except for those in front of the house so they could move it to next to or behind their house.
Are we prepared for that scenario?
You've been implementing that for several years.
I know of only one that I know of that is in the front, is in front of, and that is a very recent one. So I'm not sure.
I know of others.
Okay, all right, well. As I meant to say when I started this conversation tonight, that no matter where we go with this, someone's going to be unhappy.
Absolutely.
But that is the work of government at, you know, at its most basic level. There's no way we can please everybody in this situation. But I do think that it was extremely short-sighted for the City Commission back in 2011 to have not addressed some kind of grandfathering in this thing if we were going to come do it. I'm, as I have said many times, a pretty staunch private property rights guy. And I have never liked the idea of the City Commission making aesthetic choices for people. So, you know, what one person says is beautiful, another one says is ugly. I don't really see, you know, the color. I think the material is certainly a point. You know, I don't think we want to have things that are covered by canvas for, you know, a multitude of reasons. But as long as it's structurally sound, do these things have UL listings? Is there some kind of a certification? Does anybody know?
You know, as far as electrical certification, no. As far as snow loads, longevity.
I mean, there is some, there is some manufacturers organization or somebody out there that says, okay, this one is safe to go put out, right?
They're essentially trust construction and they would be certified to certain snow loads and, you know, post sizes and things like that. So mechanically, I would say they'd be certified.
Okay.
It would also require building permits to review.
Okay. So I guess my point is there is that, you know, whether it matches, the roof matches the color of the house, you know, I don't really care. I suppose most people would, you know, if they're married, the wife's going to say, I don't want that ugly thing unless it matches the house or whatever the case may be. But I think, you know, that the rights of the folks to be able to use their property as they see fit, as long as they are not doing something to their neighbors, is important to me. So I think getting us back down to the basics of it has to be behind the house, there has to be a maximum height. We can figure out whatever that would be for, you know, if we look at the tallest possible RV that somebody could buy and haul around on the street and make it fit that. And I think for the folks that have already had them, as long as the city has the opportunity to inspect them and make sure that they are, you know, bolted down and they're of a sound condition, that we should let those folks have them. And if there is a backlash, then we'll deal with those on a case-by-case basis. I mean, we made some people take them down. But we also have the legislative authority to change our code whenever the Commission sees fit. So I'm not sure that there would be any comeback for that if we change our code. So there might be a couple of unhappy people, but there's going to be a couple of unhappy people at the end of this, no matter what. That's all I have to say. Nancy? Commissioner.
Yeah, as far as, it seemed that in 2011, one of the intents of the changes back then was to ensure that the tarps were not thrown over structures.
I agree.
And I just think that we, or what does the Commission think? Should that be a part of this as well? That, you know, we want to try to maintain the integrity of the city that way as the intent of the 2011 revision did?
So are you saying that guys shouldn't be able to tarp his boat?
That's how, that's how the code's written now, right?
We do allow tarping of a boat. So if it's attached directly to a boat or RV, that's not considered a membrane structure. If it's within a rigid frame, then it is.
All right. And?
And I just think that, I've noticed over the last few years how there's a lot fewer tarps over piles of things in the city. So the code was working, at least from my perspective, but it just seems like we need to keep working on that so that we don't have a lot of tarps covering structures.
Well, I don't think this would affect that, right?
You could keep the provision in to not allow fabric. And that would prohibit tarp structures. A lot of the original intent was through code enforcement, people would just have a pile of something and then they would put tarps over it and say it does meet our definition of structure, so.
I think if you say that the covering must be rigid, that would be, that would do the trick.
We can work on the intent of what you're describing here.
So does anybody have any other, Commissioner Smith?
I think there's a difference between making individual, you know, few residents unhappy and then from, there's a huge difference between that and finding out that some citizens were given permission to do something that we're now going to demolish. That's the two different things. So I just want to be prepared if staff's prepared for that. How do we deal with that?
So you know for a.
I don't know for a fact.
Okay.
But I have been, I've heard, and I will say that this, there's not, there's been multiple times, well, at least one specific time on this Commission that we allowed certain things to happen in the city when it was completely against code and it was definitely known that. So I just want to be prepared, and I've mentioned this a couple of times. So if and when that happens, I said that. And I think the other conversation that we really need to think about is, we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks and months talking about the metal structures. We know that that's only one part of the problem and one part of the issues that we're dealing with in the city. And there's a lot of tent structures throughout the city. I want to make sure that we're, how we, how we go forward enforcing that or not enforcing that, and I know it's all complaint-driven, but if a structure is forced to be removed, and let's say we're across the street, there's another one there that no one cares about or has said anything about, or throughout the city, how do we deal with that?
What is a tent structure? Different from one of these like carport places, like the membrane structure?
Well, it's a fabric structure includes what?
Everything, you could think of everything except for your kid's tent.
Right, but event tents?
It includes event tents. It doesn't include, sometimes you get those pop-up tents in your backyard that are.
Right.
So if there's patio furniture.
We're talking, you know, 10 by 10 is okay. Something larger is not. So how are we making sure? Because I think what we're doing is we're. Because I think what we're doing is we're maybe fixing a problem with one structure and we're not even addressing a problem with other structures that are obviously a problem right now in the city.
I'm still trying to get a picture in my head of what the structure looks like.
Every grocery store that has, every grocery store in this town that has a, and we're not talking just a tent that's set up in the parking lot for a weekend sale. But we're talking thirty, forty, I'm talking about that, grocery outlet, Buy Mart, whatever. Those are all structures that are not allowed.
Like firework stands, kind of big tent things.
Not, I would, well, I mean, I think we don't have a, we right now don't have a way to differentiate a difference between those. If we said, you know, firework stands are there for a month and that's different, or a grocery store can put out something for two weekends because they're doing an event.
Actually, it's broken out in the code by commercial and residential.
So it sounds like you're wanting us to take a look at an opportunity for people to do special event tents or something like that. If we don't allow fabric membrane structures.
What I'm saying is we're removing them currently from individual businesses. And know that there's other businesses next door doing the same thing and we're doing nothing. I have a serious problem with that.
So are you, so are you meaning more the issue is enforcement of the code? And, and doing it because a complaint has been submitted rather than a code enforcement officer walking down a street and noticing something? And addressing it that way? So you're talking about more about just the, the process rather than?
Process, but also having a code that addresses those issues.
I think we can take a look at a difference between residential and commercial because they do design different standards. If that's something that the commission's interested in, we could, we could try to look at that as well.
Is it just a split between commercial and residential, Commissioner Smith? Or is there something else that you wanted to address with that?
That's a question for you to ask. I mean, I'm bringing it up because I think.
No, and I agree with you.
I, I, you know, and I will say, I was on the commission when, when some of these decisions were made. And, you know, the horrible thing about this is, as we've talked about before with murals and billboards and various things, there are so many things within that. And if we don't discover them all, we're going to be back in another year fixing it again. And so I want you to think about all the things that could be an issue. Not just what we've talked about with membrane structures that are metal structures on people's property. But we know that there's issues throughout the city with other tents that we still haven't addressed. So are we going to fix one thing and then two years from now, fix it again? So I think this, this new commission coming forward really needs to go through all that and fix some of those things that weren't fixed before.
I agree. The unfortunate thing about unintended consequences is they're unintended and you don't know about them until you run into it. So, you know.
But we can fix some.
We can take all the information that we currently have and do the best job we can moving forward. And then if something comes up in the future. But, but I think a lot of this could have been avoided by just grandfathering the stuff that was existing at the time. And that would have saved everybody a lot of grief, but it didn't work out that way. Is there, oh, Commissioner Mangenberg, I'm sorry.
Maybe one of the issues, Commissioner Smith, that you were kind of getting at indirectly was whether it was permanent or temporary. And I think this membrane structure code is targeted toward permanent structures. So that may help. But based on the recommendation from Mr. Conkle, I would agree with looking at that, and Mayor Holliday about the height restrictions and having it be, you know, enough for the largest possible RV to safely get under it and no higher than that. And that it should be a metal or, you know, permit, something that's going to hold up with the weather and not, not be structurally unsound or, you know, unsightly in that way. Rusty, about to fall down, that kind of thing. And the setback away from the house is important to me. And three feet is a nice step.
Why, let me ask you about that. Why, why do you think the setback away from the side of the house is important?
I meant from the front of the house. So that when you're looking at it from the street, it recedes from view a little bit. So I think that the conditions that Mr. Conkle outlined kind of addressed the key concerns that I had. And I like the idea of an expedited process, however that can be. You know, if that's the four hundred fifty, four thousand dollar version going to the planning commission, city council, I'd be for that.
Anybody else? Okay, well, then I think you have direction, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I think the one other thing I'd like to just point out is hearing consensus on this as it relates to the location of structures relative to the front of the home. We're going to prioritize that with the backlog that we currently have and address those.
Okay. I do have one quick question on, on these. Like, let's take grocery outlet, for example. They don't have a structure up all the time. But, you know, for a couple of weeks here and there, they throw one up to have, you know.
And open it, sell it, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. They have to come to the city and get a permit for those, right?
They're supposed to.
They're supposed to. Okay.
I have direction.
So I guess that's something you guys ought to talk about in that discussion. Then we are moving on to, back to sixteen, seven eleven legislative update, cities legislative priorities, Mr. Councillor.
Come forward, Eric. So just a quick introduction. I don't know if all of you know Eric Councillor, but he works, he's got a consultant firm. He's essentially the city's part-time lobbyist who's been with the city since 2014. He's a full-time lobbyist, though. He spends a lot of time at the, in Salem, at the, at the state department there. So he's helped us through a variety of issues over the last couple of years and continues to help us. We rely on Eric to keep us informed on a variety of issues. Anything from, you know, legislation that's, that's been, made lots of progress to new initiatives that are kind of coming up on the horizon. So it's been helpful for us to have Eric at hand. And he's got several clients. We're one of many. He also, he lives in the city of Bend, so he works for the city of Bend as well as works for us. And he's been a lobbyist for, you said, five sessions? And been involved in politics at the state level for seven years. Or since two thousand, two thousand seven, sorry. Yeah, since two thousand seven. So with that, Eric shared a letter that went out to you via email. So he's going to cover that and be available for any questions.
Thank you, John. Looks like I've cleared the room without even saying anything. A little cozy conversation here. So you've got a very concise letter in front of you. And I don't anticipate, I haven't planned on having a rigorous, structured presentation for you. I figured something a little less formal was probably in order to discuss the issues that we're looking at. And I should say, at this point, from a timeline perspective, the legislative session will begin February first. It'll last approximately five months. That's what we do every odd year. Every even year, it's much shorter. It's five weeks. We don't know all the bills that are going to be out there yet. There's probably going to be two to three thousand bills that are ultimately introduced, a small fraction of which will eventually pass. We have some idea of what's coming. We certainly don't know everything. And some of the city's priorities will be set based on being responsive to the things that come out. Some of them will be set by the city's own initiative. And what I've done is outline some of the more important issues that I've had conversations with staff about in the past and issues that we have acted on in the past. You guys can certainly feel free to ask any questions you want about these issues to add other issues for consideration and take the conversation wherever you like. So unless there are any questions at this point, I'll just work through the issues that I have listed in the memo. And the first one is, in my estimation and based on my interaction with staff, perhaps the biggest, if not one of the biggest ones. This is a city that in particular has, of course, invested significant amounts of resources in managing its right of way effectively. I've been here long enough to know much of the history about how many utilities have been there in the ground and haven't notified the city. And I know that, you know, Lance has been brought on to do a very deliberate job and that you guys take this issue very seriously. A lot of cities are starting to follow suit with their own ordinances and try to find means of managing their right of way suited to their own specific environment. Unfortunately, as a result of, I would say, cities have done almost too well in court defending their home rule authority. The city, Oregon City, of course, has been doing very well in its own lawsuits against Clackamas County. Ongoing lawsuits. City of Phoenix, the city of Gresham, city of Eugene. There have been a number of cases that have gone to the Court of Appeals and Supreme Court. And for the most part, cities have won almost across the board in defending their home rule authority. The reaction to that is a flurry of bills that we're likely to see from the likes of special districts, from the Association of Oregon Counties, and from private utility providers, namely telecommunications companies, that aren't happy about that. They want to impose limits on what cities can charge for the use of right of way, how that money can be expended, and whether, you know, the various amounts of local control that we do and we don't have. So for the most part, we don't really know the specifics. We know there's one bill that's being introduced by AOC and SDAO, Special Districts Association of Oregon, that would prevent cities from charging other public bodies more than the cost of, of the actual direct costs of working in the right of way. That would be a pretty significant limitation. And it would force cities to adhere to a strict accounting, which would take a lot of time and it would be eminently, eminently challengeable in court. There are at least four other bills that are being held by telecommunications folks for the most part. They haven't revealed the details. We understand that, when I say we, I should say League of Oregon Cities and a variety of other cities that have representation as well and care about this issue. We're aware of at least four other bills that are likely to be presented that would impose various limitations on what local and state government could recover in the form of revenue largely for doing business in, in the right of way. So although I can't offer details on what those are because we simply don't know them yet, I can point out that due to this entire dynamic, this is going to be, I don't know if it's LOC's number one priority on paper. I know it's one of the top ones. But I think from a practical perspective, they may spend most of their time, and many of us cities may spend quite a bit of our time working on this issue.
I might weigh in with something that's been a topic of discussion around city attorneys when you're talking about the telecommunication finance policy. There's going to be state level action, but there's also federal action. The Federal Communications Commission has been paying particular attention to right of way fees when you're talking about telecommunications. And there is a strong effort by the communication companies to have an FCC rule that limits cities' right of way fees to only recovery of costs. So it may be taken out of the state's purview entirely. So that's something that we're watching as well.
You have a political read on that?
January twenty first is the great unknown, so we'll just move on from there.
I think, I think most likely the state parties will act with that in mind, but, but won't necessarily be guided by that, given that it's the great unknown, among other things. But that's, that is an important point of context.
So does it, does telecommunications include the internet, charging for internet?
No, potentially. I mean, there's voiceover, there's internet, there's all sorts of different services that are being provided in new ways. And I think it's fair to say that state policy hasn't been regularly and consistently updated to, to address that. Cities have been losing revenue as people switch from landlines to cellular, for example, very regularly and that there's yet to be a compensation measure in terms of a, of a policy change. So we sort of expect that anything and everything can be thrown out there. I know that the telecommunications firms and others are hiring extra lobbyists this time around as if they didn't have enough to begin with. So it's possible, but I certainly, I simply don't know that level of detail right now.
One thing to keep in mind is most of the statutes that require this were written at a time well before there's been a huge technological shift. And so there's a lot of uncertainty. I think two years ago, there was a tax case involving Comcast that really set the table for that, which led to a bill in the last legislative session. So, you know, these things are filtering out. And the reality is with the way technology's changed, it's just, it's really difficult to get a read on how those will play out.
Another example of that is the, is the whole public meetings law. And that hasn't really been updated since the, you know, the realities of texting and email and other sorts of things. So I know the Oregonian is calling for that to be something on the legislative agenda this year, whether anybody gets to something as important as that. I doubt it.
You know, there was an attorney general who made that one of his priorities a few years ago, and it didn't go very well either. So there's just a lot of interests and conflict there.
So I think it's, it's fair to say that this issue is broader and the top two bullets are, could be one and the same. Right of way management and state telecommunications finance policy. Both of these things are pretty, pretty critical sources of revenue generation for state and local government. The industry, those that are being charged in general, don't want to be charged as much. So we will be fully inventorying the legislation that's put forward, working in collaboration with LOC and, and other folks who I think will, will be sympathetic to the city issues.
You would think that the Democrats support Measure ninety seven and that Comcast was the evil bad guy in the room, that they wouldn't be terribly amenable to helping out the giant mega horrible corporations that provide those services.
I think all, all else being equal, yes. But again, they have, have quite a few lobbyists.
Okay.
Okay. I wrote in state telecommunications finance policy separately because in the past it has been, it has been treated as a somewhat separate issue. I don't know that we need to go into it now. I think it's more pertinent just to wait and see what bills are introduced and summarize them accordingly. So I'll move on to transportation funding, which is something I imagine most of us are following or aware of in some fashion. There is, has been a concerted effort since, prior to the 2015 session to pass a statewide transportation funding and policy package. The funding would presumably be a result of an increase in the gas tax or indexing of the gas tax to inflation or things like that going forward, as well as an increase in driver's license fees, registration fees, so on and so forth. It didn't pass in 2015 over Republican objections to the low carbon fuel standard. That's a dynamic that is likely to be present. It's, if Measure ninety seven had passed, I could guarantee that Republicans would generally fight this tooth and nail regardless. It not passing maybe creates a little bit of a door here, but the politics is still very difficult. There's partisan issues that will have to be resolved in order for the legislature to pass a transportation package. In some cases, they're going to need Republican support to reach the super majority, sixty percent voter, the threshold requirements. So I don't think we're going to see something unless it is broadly bipartisan. That politics is still unknown. That said, everybody that is interested in seeing a transportation funding package is working diligently to figure out what that ought to look like. I think we're talking about a base package of roughly three hundred million in new revenue, revenue generation per biennium. It's not that much money when you consider maintenance needs across the state. It would be maintenance oriented rather than focusing on new facilities. I think for the most part, the participants in this process have said, right now, we want to focus on preserving the facilities that we have and the condition that they're in. Because as they start to deteriorate, the costs increase rapidly. We want to keep that. We want to reduce the bleeding until we can figure out a longer term solution to the transportation funding issue, which of course is getting worse as fuel efficiency increases. As electric cars come online, they're not paying the gas tax. So there's clearly some longer term structural issues that have to be dealt with as well. For now, we're talking about trying to raise a certain amount, probably, hopefully raising money for seismic retrofits and resiliency and emergency response issues, primarily oriented towards the risk of a Cascadia event earthquake. That's been a big topic of conversation as well. And there's been a separate conversation about metro area revenue sources that would fund facilities of statewide significance, I-205 being first and foremost. that would fund facilities of statewide significance, I-205 being first and foremost amongst those through the Rose Quarter. People around the state frankly have identified these facilities as being important to them, whether it's the freight that they're shipping from central Oregon or trying to get to the airport or, or what have you. So there's probably three components, the base statewide package, a metro area congestion issue and a seismic issue. It could be on paper 608 million or 600 million to 800 million, I think, is the size that we're talking about. Now, embedded in all of that are going to be certain things that Oregon City cares about. I've already mentioned I-205. I think that's going to be a topic of conversation one way or another. I know Clackamas County and a variety of other local government partners want to make deliberate progress on that specific facility. Amtrak Cascades as well is a service that as, as the mayor knows, has been on the chopping block in the past and, and the cities in the region have worked very hard to keep that alive. It's going to require continued work this time around as well.
Well, I, I think you're holding your breath if you, or don't hold your breath if you think a transportation package is going to get out this time. I, I think, I think it'll require the feds doing something and then us getting back to that in, in the short session or in 2019. I, I just don't see it happening this time around. I think, I think we'll keep some of the, you know, little stuff, the Cascades and some of the other things we might even get. Anyway, I, I just don't, I, I just don't think we need to waste a lot of time on transportation funding, especially with you, just because I don't think that it's going to happen this time.
And that, I think is, you know, that's certainly valuable policy direction for me. And so what I'm hearing then is don't spend time on Oregon City's behalf supporting a package broadly. Do spend time on components that are of specific interest to us and may have a path forward on their own.
Yeah. I mean, you know, certainly we would, I, I would guess that we would support a statewide transportation funding package, but I just don't see it, I don't see us needing to advocate for it because I just don't think it's going to happen this time around. So let's move on.
Property tax reform is another issue that faces an uncertain future. In 2015, legislation was passed basically asking the state revenue office to study tax reform scenarios. Oregon's property tax system is pretty convoluted. There's inequities and inconsistencies and, and all sorts of issues. Frankly, it's really difficult to pursue any policy change because it hits people. Anything you propose is going to hit people differently across every single community. So one of the things that's come up in light of the failure of Measure 97 frankly, is that some members of the legislature are very interested in pursuing a, sort of a hybrid revenue reform package that may look something like a very small gross receipts proposal, a fraction of what Measure 97 was, combined with some sort of property tax reform that would be more oriented towards putting uniformity in the property tax system rather than necessarily raising a whole lot of revenue about it.
So this is Senator Hesse's?
Yeah, he's been the primary champion. President Courtney is very encouraging of his continued effort. The House isn't taking the same approach. Representatives McLean and, and the Speaker Kotek don't see eye to eye on this issue.
Say it's not so.
Yeah, sad to say. There will be a lot of intellectual energy invested in it, again, with uncertain prospects. I know that Oregon City is, as, as just about any city is, is incredibly dependent on property tax revenue and that in particular, Oregon City has quite a few tax-exempt properties. And so doing any reform, it's important that the details are right. So I can't say that it makes sense to go into this with any sort of proactive agenda other than to watch whatever details unfold. And if it looks like something is likely to happen, be well-positioned to make sure that the outcomes that Oregon City wants are likely to be reflected in that process.
I'd say that the League of Oregon Cities has made this one of their major priorities, so they'll be pushing it. And they've done a lot of thinking about how that could work.
They've done quite a bit of thinking about the specific mechanisms that they would like to see addressed. But I spoke with Wendy Johnson today who does revenue for the League and she's just not sure. The revenue environment and the politics associated with it is so intense right now. You know, the backers of Measure 97 just re-announced today that they, their, their next proposal is basically the same thing. Slightly toned down from Measure 97, they're looking at four or five billion from the gross receipts tax instead of six. The politics is going to continue to be entrenched, so I don't know that anybody really knows how to proceed. It's, it's, it's very frustrating for those of us that would like to see a concerted effort take shape.
Moving on.
And property tax affects more of the, the local cities and counties and not so much state, the state revenue picture. So it's important to us.
Noted, thank you. Recreational liability protections, is this, does this sound familiar to anybody? Is this a new topic?
No, I'm fully familiar.
Okay.
Or the rest of you?
Okay. So the court case that I am most familiar with is Johnson versus Gibson. There's a couple court cases that are a little murkier, Horton versus OHSU, tort reform and things like that. Johnson versus Gibson was very simple. There was a city employee who left open, was working on a sprinkler, left a hole overnight. Somebody came, tripped over it, injured themselves, sued the city. Everybody had always presumed that because, I think this was Portland, although I frankly can't remember what the city was, that... Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. That, so when, when a public entity offers its land for recreational purposes free of charge, it's generally been forwarded quite a bit of liability protection. It had always been assumed that that liability protection extended to the employees. Court case turns out that, that it doesn't. So that's been a pretty major issue for not just cities but parks, districts and other people who provide those recreational opportunities. Their insurance premiums have skyrocketed and they've been much more hesitant. They've been, they've been really paranoid about what they're allowing and so a lot of things don't pencil anymore. There, there have been major investments where, where I live in Redmond, for example, a beautiful new climbing wall that was just bringing in tourists from all over the place and they had it shut, they had to shut it down due to the costs and the risks. So the, the proposal is very simple. It's re-extend protections to employees just as you would to owners and that issue more or less goes away if we accomplish that. So in speaking with staff at various points in the past, including with Wyatt, your finance director, I, I know that this is of interest and so I guess I would be looking for direction in terms of a level of priority and engagement that you'd be interested in seeing.
Right. Well, so let me ask you this. Currently, does that protection extend to the elected officials?
I presume that it does, but I don't know for sure, Bill.
So, you know, I mean, somebody fell down in a city park, broke their leg, they can't sue the city, or they...
The question is who's the owner?
So it gets into a variety of different topics to get complicated pretty quickly. The, the main issue tends to be negligence, you know, and, and somebody screwed up and did something. It's very rare that a city commissioner is going to be out doing something that could open themselves up to some sort of liability like that. To the extent you're doing it as a city official, the city insurance company would cover it, which is why this employee option sort of put the city back on the hook again, you know, when employees screw up. So...
Well, I certainly think it's a, I certainly think it's a priority for us to, to get out from underneath a possible, any possible lawsuit that we can, but through legislation is a good idea in my book.
Especially with Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I noticed a few of those things in that previous slide that you go, "Whoa."
Right.
That looks scary.
Isn't that Metro Zeezman anyway?
Huh?
Isn't that Metro Zeezman anyway?
Okay, that sounds like a pretty high priority and it will be treated accordingly. I've got two other things listed here that fall into the "let's see what happens" camp. I know that the city has a number of brownfields we've talked about that earlier today and I'm sure that's not the only one. And brownfields are notoriously difficult, as you all know, to clean up and develop for whatever intended purpose you're interested in. There have been a variety of proposals in the past legislative sessions that have passed. The only idea thus far that's been put up for 2017 is a state tax exemption. And this is not a very good session to propose a tax exemption when the party in charge is trying to raise revenue. So I don't think that this is going to be viewed favorably. As staff and I have been talking about brownfields, it's evident that it's something that is of interest. I don't know that it's going to materialize in a way that we can do anything meaningfully about it this session, so.
Well, for, for me, from just a purely political standpoint, the brownfields that we have, we actually have, I think the majority of them have some kind of plan for what we're going to do. And I don't see this going anywhere this session at all. And I think if we had to put some priorities somewhere, we'll move on to the next subject.
So, Willamette Falls Legacy Project is obviously a top priority for the city and I was very proud to have played a role in the 2015 session in helping secure state funding. So obviously this, that's, that's an investment worth protecting. And this, you know, this, this is not necessarily a line item with a specific agenda. It's basically me monitoring every one of the however many thousand bills come out and in the back of my head or the front of my head, having the success of the legacy project in mind, looking for things that present opportunities, looking for things that present challenges, reviewing those with you all and acting accordingly. I don't know that there's anything else worth saying other than that. I will say that urban renewal is likely to be on the chopping block at the state level this session. There are a variety of folks who don't like the idea that a local government has the power to limit what is ultimately going to become state revenue and then goes back into schools and other things that we all care about. I don't necessarily agree with that personally, although it's not my place personally to agree or not to agree, because I think most of us would agree that urban renewal, when it's successful over the long term, builds up property tax bases, gets you things you want and need in a community and benefits everybody. There's folks that want that money that we are abating through urban renewal now, in the next two years, the next four years.
I don't know any of those people.
So we could very seriously be fa... And there's money, there's, there's revenue that can be recovered at the state level, is the point. So this will be on the chopping block now. I, I, you know, I don't know, and maybe you guys don't know what necessarily the exact extent of the ballot measure. If it turns out that urban renewal has largely been taken away from you, I don't know that the city has much of a leg to stand on in terms of advocating for its protection at the state level.
I don't know that we'll know the answer to that before the session starts.
I think that knowing it early in session rather than the start of session would be just as important. But again, I don't know what your timeline is looking at.
We barely know that either.
Yeah.
So I, I think the, the most important thing, I'm not sure, well, I, I might disagree with you a little bit on the, on the politics of this because the 600-pound gorilla in the room is the city of Portland. And the city of Portland's going to have no desire to give up their urban renewal. And given the number of senators and, and representatives the city of Portland contains, I, I think that's a, a much tougher fight than we might be imagining. And then if you also include Lane County in Eugene, another fairly large population center that uses urban renewal, has used it successfully, B-10, I mean, you know, we can go down the list. I, I just, I don't know, I don't know where they come, I don't know where they get the votes from.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the first time Portland got theirs.
But I think in this case, I mean, Portland has received carve-outs for various things in the past. In this case, I would tend to think that Portland's defense of urban renewal would be to everybody's benefit. I don't know that, but I, I actually agree with you on the politics. I think it's going to be a heavy fight because what we're talking about is funding children's education primarily. But the defenders of urban renewal will be numerous and they will be able to articulate the benefits of urban renewal, I think, in a very effective fashion. So I'm not sweating it too much, but it can't be taken for granted either. That said, I don't necessarily know at this point, given the nature of your ballot measure, whether Oregon City has a leg to stand on. And I think it would, whether I thought there was a political opportunity to do something meaningful would depend on what you all determine that ballot measure is actually going to do.
Okay.
So on urban renewal, one of the pushes is going to be about opting out. And I mean, if, if we care about urban renewal at that point, we would want to be fighting against the ability to opt out. And the other thing that's happening is the end of the grand bargain hits this year. And so that's going to be very interesting. The Oregon Association of Redevelopment Agencies is doing a lot of work on that, so they would have positions and information that could be helpful should we need it.
What, what do you mean by the opt-out?
It might allow a special district, like say the fire district for instance, to say, "We don't want to be part of urban renewal." And if you allow any of them to opt out pretty soon, you don't have much left.
I mean, I, I don't know if the standards vary based on the municipality, but at, at a minimum, 51% of the taxing, of the tax rule and the relevant taxing districts would have to approve it. It might be higher in some cases if they can opt out individually, I think.
That's the end.
Yeah, that's the end. Or, or if school revenue is taken out entirely, that might be the end in and of itself. We don't, again, the, the bill is not yet available for viewing.
Let's read it before we know what's in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And at that point, I would open it up to additional issues or questions for you.
So Eric, this list is, you said it's in order of their likely priority to get attention in Salem? Or was this list generated from talking to staff?
Yeah, I would say that the way to read the order of this is based on my perceived level of priority from what I'm hearing. But that's of course for all of you to tell, to tell me.
Your priority that you're hearing from staff?
From you, yeah, from staff, yeah.
So staff evidently said transportation funding work for 205 is relevant, it's number three on his list.
Well, we have to take this list in context with this conversation, understanding, you know, what Eric was getting from staff was the staff perspective. What he's getting from us and, and for me is the political perspective.
Not from you, Mayor Holliday. So that's what I'm saying, is I don't know if the rest of us...
Well, anybody's willing to come in and...
If I, if I can just say a little bit here, a couple months ago, we circulated the LOC priority list. So that helped inform staff in our discussions with Mr. Councillor in putting together this list.
Okay.
And, and so I would beg to differ with Mayor Holliday. I did attend the business summit recently, the leadership summit, and transportation funding is one of the things that was on their list. So, and, and they felt, at least early on in the conversation, that chances were good. So.
Okay.
We'll see. All right, anything else?
All right, we're good.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thank you.
For reading.
I don't know why anybody would want to be in the legislature for nine years, but...
That's paid pretty well, Eric.
All right, so, city manager, you got anything?
Yes, let's start. Mr. Lewis is going to provide an update on the Berryhill Apartment forest edge area. Really? Did I miss a tech?
No, I'm fascinated. Bring it on.
There we go. It's showtime.
Okay, so, yeah, we understood that you, there was an interest in learning a little bit more about the Berryhill retaining wall, so put together a few construction photos. These are, I was going to do this last week, so these photos are a couple weeks old. But as you know, let me start by saying the Berryhill Apartments retaining wall is a private, private sector project. It's not a publicly funded project. So it's an interesting project and it's of interest to the community, but it's not funded by city dollars, okay? With that, let me see if I can move forward. So really, this is just a series of pictures. This is a drone flight photograph of the Berryhill Apartments. So there's an eight-plex, which is the large building to your right, and then the duplex, which is the smaller building to the left. And all the white material there on that slope, that's actually a pretty, a very steep slope and it's covered in plastic. And there's a track hoe, two couple of track hoes with some specialized equipment that you'll see in other pictures.
Man, that's scary. Driving a backhoe back there?
Yeah, you hire, you hire a backhoe.
Yeah. I didn't like standing back there, much less driving a backhoe. All right, go ahead.
Just a little bit of information on the project itself. So there's, they've got a, got a good team of engineer, owner, contractor and structural engineer. So we're comfortable with the information that they're providing. Shannon and Wilson is... with the information that they provide. Shannon and Wilson is recognized in the industry as one of the, one of the best geotechnical engineers. So, we feel real good about that. They've actually helped us. I mean, we haven't done a lot of plan review on this. We did have a third-party geotech review some of their information and their design, but really they're, they're leading edge. So, again, this is just another picture to give you a little perspective on the site itself.
So, are they planning on building that wall far enough out that they can put the, the decks back on the back of that apex?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it's, it's probably 10, 12 feet off the backside of the buildings. Really, it's interesting. Our first concern was it's just to build the, kind of the way in there, they had to broadcast a lot of that material down onto the lower slope and that kind of concerned us a little bit, but no other way doing that. So, they have permission from the lower property owner as well. So, basically, we've got what we call soldier pile wa, wall. There's a single row of that. I'll show you some details of that. Those soldier piles, which are basically columns, if you will, that are drilled, they're not, they're not hammering these into the ground. They're, they're drilling a hole, setting the, basically a steel I-beam and then backfilling that with concrete slurry. And that's, that's the vertical column. And then, they're tying those back. They drill back in underneath the buildings with, with long cable ties, just to kind of give it that much more support. So, you'll see a picture of that. And then...
So, the theory is, is that if the slide continues at Forest Edge, that because they put this wall in, that it's, the slide isn't going to go back up inside this wall? Is that the theory?
Right. So, that, in theory, these soldier piles are drilled well below the slide plane that the Forest Edge Apartment slide is on. So, they've done all the geotechnical analysis, so they know where that slip plane is. And they're below that with their wall and they're below that with these tiebacks. So, really, this is all about stabilizing the Berryhill Apartments, not necessarily stabilizing the slope below the Berryhill Apartments. So, the picture on your left is the standard detail of what I'm talking about there. They're basically these, these long columns, if you will, that are drilled in place, set in concrete slurry. And then, the upper part of those and some of the areas where the wall is exposed on the downhill side, they actually slide large pressure-treated timbers down in there. So, you typically see these in highway construction projects where they're basically cut in a vertical slope and they're building the roadway below that. So, Tuiliger Curves is a good example of that.
So, the work they just finished in Tuiliger Curves over the last couple of years, those were soldier piles there?
Right.
Okay.
They, they may have placed them differently than this, but same concept. And then, the tieback is actually drilled back into the bank. And in this case, it will be under the, under the apex and under the duplex. And then, the drawing on your right is just showing you the, kind of the planned view. So, the apex and the duplex are shown there and they're really building this wall across their entire frontage there.
So, one other technical question. The tieback, you say they drill it in. What's at the other end that holds on?
So, there's, it's usually, and I haven't seen these tiebacks in specific, but there's usually a, they're made, they're metal, they're galvanized usually, and they usually screw them in. So, it's like a screw head. It's just screwed in.
Oh, so like a, a drywall anchor.
Okay, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Is it screwed into rock?
Soil.
Soil.
Yeah. And again, it's below that, it's below that, those tiebacks are below that slip plane area. So, they're going beyond the slip plane with their tiebacks. Sometimes they drill them into, into rock. In this case, there's not rock to tie to. Does that make sense? This is just some more pictures, give you some sense of some of the scale. So, here there, that picture on the left is the, essentially the drill rig, the auger that's augering out the hole. And then, you can see beyond it, the I-beams that are, that are set and put in place. And then, they come back and they backfill those with a slurry mix. The picture in the middle is really those, those columns standing. And then, they actually, they have to dig out some of the concrete slurry that they just poured so that they can slide those timbers in between them. So, I, my recollect is those columns are on like six-foot centers and along the entire length of the wall.
That's about right. So, the wood in there, that comes out?
No, that stays.
That stays.
Usually, for instance, Tuiliger, there's formwork that goes on in front of those and they make a pretty wall or they, they cover it with grout or something like that. In this case, in this case, you'll see that, you'll be able to see that, those timbers. And then, they tend to sometimes settle and so, they can come back in and maintain those from time to time as needed.
And they're pressure-treated, so they'll hold up?
Right. There's also quite a drainage system behind them and they're backfilled with peat gravel. So, you know, the, there's obviously some moisture there, but it's not like holding water. So, the schedules may have changed with some of the weather we're having, but I think even with weather, they were hoping to finish this by the end of January. So, you know, they've been, they're a very competent contractor and so, good team.
What, go back there, one thing. What does this 24, 2741 mean?
That's, that's some specification for the type of anger, sorry. And I, I'm not that familiar with it, what that means, but it's a specification. Oh, I guess I'm wrong about the end date. Looks like they've got some other things that they'll be doing between, yeah. So, let me see, that's, yeah, so, it looks like mid-February is when they're actually complete.
So, at that point, then, they would be able to move people back into those structures?
That I haven't heard, but their ultimate goal is to move people back into those structures. When, whether they've got improvements to do, you know, inside, are they going to add the decks back, all those questions. The wall is placed such that they could add the decks back.
But I guess my question is, as far as the city is concerned, once, once this wall is completed, then we would be removing our red tag of those structures?
Well, I haven't talked to, I haven't talked to our building official, but the idea would be that then a reevaluation would be made of those. They'd have to get building permits for any improvements that they want to do. But yeah, at that point in time, those, there would be an effort to get them back. So, our red tag would be lifted.
Okay.
And do you, do you under, do you know if there would be a preference to re-rent to the folks that were displaced or...
Have not talked to the owner about that. My suspicion is those, those tenants, most of which have, have...
Moved on.
Found. But we haven't gone back to the property owner to find out if they're going to, you know, off, offer first to those previous tenants or not.
Is a million-dollar retaining wall down, I think, well?
Generally, that's what we're hearing.
Yeah. Another big plus for Oregon City, you're home with a million-dollar retaining walls.
That's one way of looking at it. All right. Just again, more pictures kind of showing you that drainage system, that black thing is, is actually a pipeline, if you will. It's just a flat pipeline and then backfilling with gravel on the backside. And there's fabric behind there and everything else, just to kind of keep those timbers, you know, not exposed to the dirt.
So, these were the upper apartment complexes. What about the lower ones? Are those vacated and no longer available or gone?
Right.
Unusable?
They remain vacated. They're not gone, they're still there, but they're vacated and they're structurally, there's, you know, there's, the prognosis for those is not nearly as, as good as the...
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, if you, I don't, you haven't been to that lower site, have you?
No.
So, you can't really, can't really get the impression until you walk to the backside of the lower units and then look and see where the two other big apartment buildings were when they came down, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago, whatever it was. And you can see how that whole thing from the top street all the way down there is moving. So, to get, I don't know that you could build a retaining wall that could hold that, just because it's...
For one, it's, you know, these are 50-foot soldier piles. You know, you probably can't get to the slip plane on that until you're 80 to 100 feet deep and then you've got nothing to really tie back to. So, it's not, not, the problem gets progressively worse as you move down the slope.
So, those aren't ever going to be habitated again?
Highly unlikely, unlikely. The most, probably the, the most that we could ever hope for, and this is just really a pipe dream, I had somebody talk to me about saying they could haul those buildings out of there and put them somewhere else.
Yeah, I'd worry about the, the up slope because any load like that could, you know, disassembly makes sense.
Or...
Demolition makes sense.
Practice for CCFD. All right, anything else?
Just a quick update. We just received notice tonight during the meeting. The Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was appealed to the Court of Appeals. The appellant has 21 days to file their brief. We'll have 21 days to respond and we will, as we move through the process...
Today was the last day?
Today was the last day.
What was the basis of the appeal?
I haven't even read it yet.
A big old bowl spaghetti and they throw it against the wall and see what sticks.
So, the, the notice of appeal doesn't give any basis. It's a short two-page just saying, hey, we appeal. 21 days from now, we'll know.
And last but not least, just updating you, we, we're not, we're not going to have a meeting on December 21st. We don't have anything else for that agenda tonight, so just confirming that we will be canceling on that date.
Is that it?
That's it.
Merry Christmas.
So, yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Once again, Commissioner Smith, thank you for service, sir. Appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing you again.
Good luck, Frank.
Does anybody else have anything to go to the order? Then, we're adjourned.